Welcome to the continuation of the Tuesday, October 22, 2013 Elmhurst Board of Education meeting. We have seven board members present, none absent. We have been in closed session since 6:30 this evening to discuss a student residency case and to approve the September 24, 2013 closed session minutes. Next on our agenda, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now for the best part of any Board of Education meeting, student recognition. Mr. Purno?
Yes, we have several recognitions tonight, and the first one is our National Merit Scholarship Program commended students. And just a little background, the National Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognitions and scholarships that began in 1955, a long time ago. High school students enter the competition by taking the PSAT, the National Merit Scholarship qualifying test, a test which serves as an initial screen of approximately 1.5 million students each year, and by meeting published program entry and participation requirements. In late September, more than two-thirds, about 34,000 of approximately 50,000 high scores, receive letters of commendation, and those are the students we are recognizing this evening. So I'd like to turn it over to Diana Smith, and Diana Smith will do the honors of introducing and recognizing our 2014 commended scholars.
We appreciate the opportunity to come in and introduce some wonderful students, some of whom I think you've met in other recognitions, but just a great group, and Superintendent Purno talked about how meaningful this recognition is, that students score in the top 5% nationwide of all of the juniors who take the PSAT across the nation. So it's my pleasure to introduce the students to you, and not all of the students could be here tonight, and I'm going to read the names of all the students, and then I'm going to go back and talk about each one individually. So, and I promise I wouldn't talk very long, so I promise. Our students, our commended students for this year, proud to introduce Megan Bogolia, Andrew Douglas, Audrey Fisher, Luke Guerrieri, Rachel Iverson, Colleen Lehrer, John Mazaco, Elizabeth Mandralla, Madeline Meyer, Jacqueline Nugent, Anna O'Donnell, Cormac O'Halloran, Rebecca Overend, Celine Taylor, Natalie Watts, and Tim Worley. Those are the commended students. If I could just introduce each one, and students, as I say your name if you just wave, I'll show you the crowd and to your parents. First of all, Megan Bogolia, she's the daughter of Jackie and Mike, she has an older brother, Jacob, and she attended Lincoln and Bryan. She serves as a peer tutor at York. She works at Quartz Plus, but one of the most interesting things I think that I learned about her is that she volunteers, she organizes a breakfast every month through her church, the First United Methodist Church, for the people that attend, for the clothing activity to go and pick up clothing each month. And so she and her friends in her youth group organize a breakfast on their own every month. She's not sure about where she's going to college, but plans to study either business or psych, something where she will get to travel, she said. Her inspiration, her mother, and Ms. Rogers, her youth minister. This is Megan Bogolia. Andrew Douglas. Andrew is the son of Sue and Mark Douglas, he has siblings Katie and Emily. He also attended Lincoln and Bryan, you're going to hear that a number of times tonight. He participates in cross-country track science olympiad. He has not decided on a school, but let me just say, when I heard the list, I would describe them as big, smart schools. He plans to study engineering, and he feels that all of the teachers and coaches that he has had the pleasure to work with throughout his time in District 205 have all been inspirational for him and helped him to be, what he says, a better person. This is Andrew Douglas. Rachel Iverson, who just flew in from a volleyball game, just finished up, did you win? Not that it's about winning or losing, but they won, alright. They won. The daughter of Patty and Keith Iverson, as you know Patty is one of our social studies teachers, and she has a sister Emily, who is also her inspiration and role model. She hopes to continue studying music. She is one of our drum majors in our symphonic band and hopes to pursue music at some level in college. She's also a very talented volleyball player, and when I asked her about where she was going to college, she's so talented and also so modest, she said, "Just somewhere where she can get a very solid education and decide what she wants to do," which is wonderful. This is Rachel Iverson. And John Mazaco. John is the son of Gail and Anthony. He has three, he has triplets who are freshmen at York, triplets, imagine, and an older sisters. Sisters and brothers are Grace, Elizabeth, Luke, and Abby. He attended Immaculate Conception. He's also applying to a lot of very big schools. He plans to study physics and something in the area of research, and he felt that Ms. Moss, his freshman biology teacher, was inspirational for him and helped him to develop an even stronger love of science, which he has enjoyed all his life. So this is John Mazaco. Elizabeth is the daughter of Laura and Ed Mandralla. She is a twin to Sister Jessica and has a younger brother Danny. She attended Lincoln and Bryan. She's thinking about a number of schools, including Washington University. She plans to study chemistry and feels that her parents have been critical for her in her development and describes them as her role models. This is Elizabeth Mandralla. Madeline Meyer, and you may recognize Madeline, I think Madeline's been here before, she's the daughter of Kathy and John. She has a sister Allison at York and Elena and Jacqueline at Sandberg. She attended Field and Sandberg. She's not quite sure where she's going, but I think she's looking at a number of great schools, I think 13, is that right? Am I close? She wants to study music, performance, and voice. I was going to ask her to sing for you tonight, but we said not enough time. Very, very talented, she's a member of the Spirito Sing Concert Group here in the community. She credits a number of people, including her parents, but also the children's theater director that she had, and every single one of her music and voice teachers along the way in District 205, which I thought was lovely. This is Maddie Meyer. Jacqueline Nugent. Jacqueline is the daughter of Kathy and Tony, she has a brother and sister, Alexander and Courtney, both graduates. She attended Lincoln and Bryan. She doesn't have a top school yet, but she is going to study atmospheric science and meteorology. She credits her parents for inspiration and Mr. Schoenberg, I thought was interesting, we hear that a lot, one of our math teachers, calculus teachers, she said, "Whose love for math, passion for math was inspiring." This is Jacqueline Nugent. My pleasure to introduce Camrick Cormac, I'm sorry, Cormac O'Halloran, who's the son of Lisa and Jim. He has a sister, in my freshman orientation, actually, Amelia, and an older brother, James. He attended Sandberg and Hawthorne. Not sure yet where he's going to school. At York, he's active in wrestling and Scholastic Bowl. But I think the most important, one of the most significant things that I think he's known for among the faculty and students and parents at York is that he's the student leader for the Y Set organization. It's been a pleasure to work with him. He also works actively with a group called Access Sports, which is sports teams for special needs children. He admires his older brother, because he said he's one of the most hardworking people he knows who is studying right now in Annapolis, Maryland. This is Cormac O'Halloran. Celine Taylor is the daughter of Joan Ann Raymond, has a brother Stephen, attended visitation. She's not sure where she's going to be studying, applied to a number of schools, she's thinking about architecture. At York, she's been involved in orchestra and band, plays the French horn. She's one of the drum majors, and she said she aspired to be a drum major because of the influence that the drum major had when she was a freshman and going along in the high school, and she credits her parents and Mr. Pavlik, her band director. So this is Celine Taylor. And Natalie Watts. Natalie is the only child of Catherine and Michael Watson, what an only child, so talented, attended Jackson and Bryan, she's looking at NYU, Boston, and Loyola, among others. She is the captain of the mock trial team at York. She is going to study probably broadcast as an undergrad and then on to law school. She credits her parents for support, said she's, they've been critical along the way because they are, she says, "The best audience in the world when she's practicing her opening arguments." So this is Natalie Watts. And then, last but not least, Tim Worley, and Tim is the son of Mike and Darcy, he has a brother, John, at Illinois Wesleyan, he went to, Mr. Hillman, Jackson and Bryan. He is pursuing a number of schools, great schools, including Stanford. He plans to study business and econ. At York, he plays soccer, basketball, and volleyball. He's in econ club and the National Honor Society. He credits Mr. Anderson, Peter Anderson, one of our AP US history teachers who was with us until last year as a great inspiration. This is Tim Worley, and these are our commended students. Congratulations.
They're artists, poets, scientists, athletes. They're active, involved kids with multiple talents. They're social, socially responsible. They're positive leaders for our York School community, and they've done virtually everything they've been asked to do on the academic side. They approach school the way they approach everything in their lives, a challenge to be met. And for all they've done, a little recognition from this community is in order, and we're very proud of you. So let me read the proclamation here. Whereas the National Merit Scholarship Program, established in 1955, is recognized throughout America as the most prestigious indicator of academic excellence. And whereas over 1.5 million students took the preliminary SAT, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, and entered the National Merit Program, a nationwide competition for recognition and awards conducted by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. And whereas in late September, more than two-thirds, about 34,000 of the 50,000 highest scores received letters of commendation and recognition of their outstanding academic promise. And although they will not continue in the 2014 competition for the National Merit Scholarship Awards, commended students placed among the top 5% of more than 1.5 million students who entered the 2014 competition. And whereas, as a National Merit Scholarship Corporation spokesperson, recently noticed, the young men and women being named commended students have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. These students represent a valuable national resource. Recognizing their accomplishments, as well as the key role the schools play in their academic development, is vital to the advancement of educational excellence in our nation. We hope that this recognition will help broaden their educational opportunities and encourage them as they continue their pursuit of academic success. And whereas the following York Community High School class of 2014 students, Megan Bogolia, Andrew Douglas, Audrey Fisher, Luke Guerrieri, Rachel Iverson, Colleen Lehrer, John Mazaco, Elizabeth Mandralla, Madeline Meyer, Jacqueline Nugent, Anna O'Donnell, Cormac O'Halloran, Rebecca Overend, Celine Taylor, Natalie Watts, and Timothy Worley, have been named as 2014 National Merit Commended Students, representing the top 5% of US high school seniors. And whereas this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to York Community High School, District 205, the families of these students, and the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students for this outstanding academic accomplishment. Thank you. And if you'd come around, we have a copy for you, and if you could swing around behind and greet the school board members and the cabinet. Here, let me step from behind. Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
Congratulations to all the students and all the parents that are here this evening. Well-deserved recognition. We have another recognition this evening. The National Hispanic Recognition Program identifies academically outstanding Hispanic, Latino, high school students. Each year, this organization honors about 5,000 of the highest qualifying students of over 250,000 Hispanic and Latino juniors who take the PSAT. These students are not only from the United States, but they're from Puerto Rico, the US Virgin Islands, Guam, the Marianas, and Marshall Islands, as well as US citizens attending abroad. So it's a very special recognition that we give this evening, and again, I'm going to turn this over to Diana Smith, who will recognize the York junior who has been recognized for this recognition.
All the spotlight, as she should. It is my pleasure to introduce to you tonight Christina Uribe, who is a senior and getting ready to go off next year to school, although she's not yet sure which school she'll attend, but I want to tell you a little bit about her. She is the daughter of Victoria and Ramon. Her mother is a pediatrician in town, I think probably a lot of people know her, and her father, an engineer. She has a sister, Gabriella, who's a freshman, and her plans are to study neuroscience. She believes in the area of either practice, she'll be practicing in the field of medicine or in research. She said she's always loved math and science. She is, would be a good match, I think, for Dr. Lou Canetti when she's here, we talked about that a little bit. She attended Lincoln and Bryan. I think she was probably there when you were there, actually, Mr. Hillman, I think you've had a lot to do with the, all the students that have come through. And she's a member, she's very active, of course, at York and in the community. She is a member of the symphonic and marching bands. She plays both the oboe and the clarinet. When I asked her who had been, who the people had been along the way, who had been inspirational to her, she described a teacher at Lincoln, Ms. Smith Jans, who I believe, she believes might be retired, but she said she had a great influence on her, and also Mrs. Leahy, Linda Leahy, the math teacher for enriched freshman geometry at York. I did ask her teachers, a couple of her teachers about her, and all of the people that I talked with say that she's talented, bright, ambitious, all the great things that we know about her, but also what a lovely person she is and what a difference that she makes for students around her. Mr. Pavlik, her band director, said Christina is a fantastic musician. She's worked her way through every single band ensemble at York and is now sitting as the first-chair oboist in the top band and orchestra. Her woodwind quintet performs regularly throughout the year, and this isn't something she's required to do, it's something that she chooses to do. She performs at nursing homes, at the Elmhurst Pads Homeless Shelter, and several other community organizations. He said she's been also a great leader in the marching band, inspiring her peers by using her strong musical ability, charisma, and warm, personable sensitivity. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you, one other interesting fact about her, she's actually a coach of seven-year-old soccer players for Team Elmhurst, one of the things she said she loves the most. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you Christina Uribe.
This is what it's all about, honoring our students and recognizing what a great job they're doing, and knowing that the future is in great hands. So let me read this proclamation. Whereas the College Board is a leading advocate and resource for excellence and equity in education and identifies academically outstanding Hispanic, Latino, high school students, and whereas its National Hispanic Recognition Program this year honored about 5,300 of the highest-scoring students from over 250,000 Hispanic, Latino juniors who took the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Tests, including students from the United States, Puerto Rico, a territory of the United States, the US Virgin Islands, Guam, Mariana Islands, and the Marshall Islands, as well as US citizens attending schools abroad, and whereas although the National Hispanic Recognition Program does not provide a financial reward, being named is an important academic recognition, and students with the junior-year cumulative GPA of 30 to 3.49 are designated as Scholars of Honorable Mention, and whereas Christina Uribe, York Community High School class of 2014, and daughter of Ramon and Vicki Uribe, was named as National Hispanic Recognition Program Honorable Mention recipient. And whereas this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to the York Community High School, District 205, and the family of Christina and the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to Christina Uribe for this outstanding academic accomplishment.
We're going to switch, and we're going to honor some adults. Again, congratulations to students and parents, outstanding achievements, but we're also tonight recognizing some dedicated adults in our community who were just recently recognized by the Illinois State Board of Education. This is the 39th year that the state board awards recipients of the Those Who Excel Award, and this year, they had honored 183 award recipients, and there was a banquet that was held last Saturday. This process recognizes those individuals who contribute to school districts in a variety of capacities, teachers, board members, support staff, anyone who has an opportunity to touch the lives of children and who are dedicated and offer an enhancement to those schools are nominated for this recognition. It's quite an extensive process, there's an application process, there's a letter of recommendations that have to be put in, there is a committee of peers that review all of the applications each year, and they recognize only the most outstanding individuals who have contributed to their community in the area of education. I am pleased to announce that we had six candidates who were nominated, and we had six candidates who were awarded Those Who Excel recipients. And so tonight, we'd like to honor those, and it's my privilege to honor the first one, and I am going to call up Susan Deroni to stand next to me. Susan, if you don't, I don't know how you not recognize Susan, she is a former board member who served on the Board of Education for 20 years. Now, let me emphasize a couple of things. First of all, board members do not get compensated, number one. I know there's all kinds of rumors out there, they don't receive a dime. This individual, standing next to me, served this community in the capacity of a Board of Education member for 20 years. She had to be elected five consecutive times. That alone in these times says a lot about Susan. Communities just don't rehire and reelect board members that many times. Education's controversial, education always has its ups and downs, but through all of that, Susan was recognized as a dedicated individual who was all about students. So let me just, I'm going to take, I was asked later, write a letter of recommendation, I'm just going to read some portions of it so you get a sense. Susan certainly deserves this recognition. First of all, for 20 years and five re-elections to this committee, but that's not it. She served in that capacity as a number of board committees, and I can't, I can't even imagine how many board committees Susan served on in 20 years, because I've only been here three, and I know we've gone through 10 or 15 committees, so that's unbelievable. She advised on policy issues throughout, and was really part of a process of rewriting the board policy, that is a key piece in any school district, and Susan was instrumental in knowing that had to be rewritten, and two years of dedicated work to bring the policy up to where it is today, which is where it should have been a long time ago. So Susan's really to be credited for that. She provided support and service and advisement to four superintendents, including this one, and spent endless hours listening to community members, parents, and students. Susan was also instrumental in the passage of two major district referendum in our community, which was invaluable in continuing the tradition of educational excellence that this district stands for. Her values and high expectations for our educational system has in no small part been responsible for the success and reputation that Elmhurst Community Schools has today. Her belief that we can never do enough for students has provided direction and inspiration to generations of students and staff. She has faced many difficult decisions during her tenure, but has always based those decisions on what is best for students and what is best for this community. And I just want to share with you, one of the things that struck me in her biography was a quote. She spoke at the graduating class of 1998, and her message was, "Be the kind of world you want." And Susan really is a person that believes that, who walks that walk and talks that talk every day. It was a privilege to have her as a board member, and she served as my first board president when I came to Elmhurst, so it's really a privilege to recognize Susan Deroni as one of those recipients. Congratulations, Susan. Are we going to do this recognition now, or wait till everybody comes back? At the end? Okay, so we'll move on, so we'll call you back. We have the next recognition, it's my privilege to introduce Ryan Anderson. Ryan is the principal of Jackson Elementary School, and he recognized and nominated a whole team that we are honoring this evening. So, Brian, if you would do the honors.
And if my second-grade team would join me up here, please? Yeah, the middle's great. Fabulous. Well, good evening, Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 Board of Education, Administration, and Community. It is my distinct privilege to introduce to you our Jackson second-grade team, and briefly share with you some of the reasons why they were nominated and won the award of recognition in the team category for Those Who Excel. From your left to right, we have Becky Hirsch, Kathy Moran, Sue Latoria, and Lori Jorben. I've worked with these four second-grade teachers for the past four school years, and I've consistently seen examples of them as a high-functioning, interdependent group of professional educators who dedicate themselves to student growth and success. Their commitment to their students, their families, the school, other staff members, and each other is truly exemplary. When you research some of the key components to effective educational teams, there are some very clear indicators. For example- For example, shared values and focus. Each day, they have one focus of student safety, student learning, and shared valuing of each other. That's something they model in their classrooms, they model before and after school, during the lunch hour, recess times, it transcends their day. Another clear indicator is collective responsibility. All students within our second grade are taught at different times by all of the teachers on this team. This adds to their philosophy, which they share, in that all of the second-grade students are their students. If one student might be struggling, they combine efforts to support him or her. If one student might need some added challenge, they again collaborate and find ways to make this happen in different environments. This collective responsibility then extends to others who support students with their team, and so this attitude that they bring is then shared by other teachers and assistants. Collaboration is a third quality of effective teams. This team collaborates on unit lesson plans, assessment and assessment results, instructional approaches and intervention designs. Their collaboration extends certainly beyond just their rooms. Last year, for example, when they recognized how the second graders were not demonstrating the level of reading fluency that was necessary for those students to be maximally successful, they collaborated with many different adults in the building and many parent volunteers. They provided training to the parents in consultation with our reading support team, and all of the students then participated in reading fluency practice throughout the year. And the result showed itself in both the students' fluency scores as well as daily student reading that they saw in the classroom. Another key characteristic of effective teams is group as well as individual learning is highly promoted. These educators, they value the input of all team members and support one another. This includes trying new instructional strategies and being vulnerable with each other for the benefit of student growth. They value team learning to the extent that other teachers in the district have come to our school to observe this team in order to make improvements within their own schools, and our team very much embraces that type of mutual collaboration. Finally, the last characteristic of high-effective teams I wanted to mention is trust, respect, and support. And these three words do truly embody the core of these four teachers. They operate with the highest levels of care, both personally and professionally for one another, and they live out these values in the work that they demonstrate with their students. In summary, the passion that these teachers bring forth each day for making kids be successful, and they do it in such a unified front, and that is clearly why they were nominated and won the Those Who Excel Award. Thank you. And next, I want to welcome Principal Jane Bailey from Conrad Fisher.
Good evenings to the Board of Education, the Administration, and the District 205 Community. It's an honor and privilege to introduce to you Mr. Nicholas Navarro, the recipient of an Award of Excellence at the Those Who Excel Recognition Program. This is Nick's fifth year in our district. He spent four years at Fisher and made an immediate impact on the school community. Started a program for fathers called Watch Dogs, which is part of, it's from the National Senator for Fathering, and it has to do with bringing the dads into school, take a day off work, come into school, and participate in the activities of the school. The primary focus of that program is to increase security. Another male in the building. The focus of the program that Mr. Navarro developed was to bring dads in and get them involved in the academic lives of their children. So they sat side by side, they saw the work the kids were doing, they participated in the instruction, and it was an unbelievable success. He asked dads to stand up, line up and sign up, and they did by droves. We probably had a watchdog in the building most days at the inception year. And so surprised, the moms got jealous. So along came super moms. Same kind of thing, and we continue those programs today, and it makes a difference. Some parents come in and spend a day, maybe it's the child's birthday, maybe it's just a day off work, they played hooky one day, and it's still working. And we are also including community members. Dr. Harrow was a supermom not too long ago, two or three weeks ago. And all of the classrooms at Fisher can benefit from that kind of activity, that kind of involvement, and the parents benefit by seeing the kids in action in the classroom. In addition, he has been a leader in the district as far as the implementation of the CHAMP's initiative, classroom management strategies, as well as PBIS. There is none more deserving than Nick Navarro. It is my privilege to introduce the social worker extraordinaire, Nick Navarro.
Okay, to come in front? Yeah, right in the center. Susan, Susan, yes, hi. Congratulations to everybody. I just wanted to add a personal note, two of my kids have gone through second grade at Jackson, so I'm very familiar with this team, and thank you so much. My kids had just a great year, they learned so much because of your dedication and teamwork, and all of the parents know, you work so well together. So, thank you, and thank you to all of you. Okay, here's the proclamation. Whereas the Illinois State Board of Education annually recognizes and honors individuals who have made outstanding contributions to public and non-public elementary and secondary education by recognizing them as Those Who Excel Award recipients. And whereas six members of the Elmhurst School District 205 Staff Board of Education were nominated last spring and recently named as honorees in the 39th Annual ISBE Those Who Excel Competition in the following categories: An Award of Excellence, of which only 46 were recognized statewide, and two awards of recognition, of which 80 were so honored. And whereas on October 19th, 2013, in Bloomington-Normal, Illinois, the Jackson Elementary School second-grade team comprised of Rebecca Hirsch, Lori Jorben, Sue Latoria, Kathy Moran, received an Award of Recognition in the Team category, and Nicholas Navarro, Elementary School Social Worker formerly of Fisher and currently at Jefferson Elementary, received an Award of Excellence in this category of School Support Personnel, and Susan Derone, Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 Retired School Board Member, received an Award of Recognition in the Board Member/Community Volunteer category. And whereas State Superintendent Christopher Cook has noticed, had noted that every day in schools across the state, dedicated educators are diligently working to help students become successful learners. They might be helping a student overcome an obstacle, understand a new concept, or apply for college, but they're all putting their students first. And whereas this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205, Fisher, and Jefferson, and Jackson Elementary Schools, and to the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express deep appreciation and gratitude, and congratulations to these six award winners for their outstanding accomplishments.
I just have to say that I'm really honored to get this award, but these are the people who deserve this award. These five teachers, these five people who, the social worker who's on the front line, as well as every teacher in this district who works every day, every school nurse, every janitor, every school cafeteria person, those people who are on the front line every day with our children, they deserve the real award, and my hats are off to you. And I also want to say it's been really a lot of fun to be at this meeting tonight. And I will add that the very best part is I am going home in five minutes.
Now, this isn't over yet. Superintendent Purno has a couple of more things to add.
Yeah, just a couple more. First of all, Susan stole my thunder, but those people that were recognized tonight do represent a lot of other people in this district who are very dedicated, who spend endless hours working very hard for the benefit of students in this community. So, we certainly want to recognize these individuals, but all the individuals in the district that make this school district just an exceptional school district. In kind of recognition of that, I just want to mention three other awards that we're not recognizing tonight, but I think are worth mentioning to the community. First of all, Churchville Middle School was selected as a presenter for the CHAMP's PBS Forum that was held in Rosemont, Illinois, and that's a national forum that occurs, and that was held on October 10th. And they were honored with their school social worker, Megan McCarthy, and she was selected to be a co-presenter along with Jennifer Phillips of SACID and Kevin Moore of the University of Oregon on the application of positive family support models. And they presented, so both the team and these individuals presented at that national conference. So congratulations to Churchville and their staff. Also, District 205 had, thanks to the Communications Department and individuals in the district, had four state award winners from approximately 50 districts across the state of Illinois who were recognized by the Illinois Public Relations Association. Malia Smith, Director of Communications and Public Relations, along with videographers Emily and Todd Mooney, were honored for the Award of Excellence for a video they shot, Welcome Elmhurst Community School District Back to School video that we showed last year. It was an outstanding video, and they were recognized by the association for that video. Electronics Communication Specialist Kathy Schrader and Assistant Superintendent Finance Chris Welton were also honored as an Award of Merit for Facilities at a Glance that has been recognized across the state as just an exceptional information item for school districts. In addition, Kathy, again, and the Communication Office Assistant Debbie Holstein, won an Award for Merit for the Showtime 2012-13 Finance brochure that was part of this community. And Malia and graphic designer Deanna Fulner received an Award of Merit for the report to the community in 2011-2012. So congratulations to all of those people for, again, statewide recognition for our district. And finally, John Gaunt, music teacher, was named IMEA Conductor for the Elementary Honor Choir. This is from the Illinois Music Education Association, District 7, and he will be the conductor for the Elementary Honorary Choir for 2013. This is the second time that John has been named and honored as such. So congratulations to those individuals and everyone here this evening. Thank you.
Before we move on to the public comments section of our agenda tonight, I notice most of our students have slipped out, all I'm sure to go back and do homework, but everyone is, first of all, is welcome to stay, but we also recognize that there are lessons to plan for and days to prepare for tomorrow. So I'm going to just go clear a one-minute break for the people that want to slip out of the meeting, and then we'll continue. I have one blue slip of paper. I just want to remind people that is our practice not to respond to public comment, but I assure you, we do listen. The one verbal comment card that I have is from Gilbert Fisher. Mr. Fisher, if you'd come up, state your name, your address, and your comments.
Good evening. Gilbert Fisher, 586 North Van Hocken Street, Elmhurst, Illinois. I come here tonight very happy. My wife went out and got a job. Seventy-eight years old, five feet two, 106 pounds. She went out and got a job, and it's very nice. We've been retired 13 years, and that's it. No more retirement for us. Our house is paid for, we have two cars, they're paid for, two credit cards, we owe nothing. But with my retirement, my wife's retirement, we have no money to pay the taxes on our house. Our house is paid off, like I said, in 1989, and we have to go to work because of you fine, upstanding people raising the taxes on our house. Thank you very much. The property went down, the taxes went up. Hundred and fifty-three dollars in one year for School District 205. All these fine people in here with their nice rewards and everything, very nice at the expense of the old people. The law has to change. My wife and I haven't had anything to do with School District 205 for over 25 years except paying you $5,000 a year to operate your school. If you have nobody in the School District 205, you shouldn't pay one damn cent to anything for the schools. All these nice awards here. I had to go out and go through my Army paper to get a job. I found out that I have an award coming to me. In 1964, I was awarded a Good Conduct Medal. I never got it. So you people get nice awards, I got an award coming to me from the Army yet. Thank you very much. Thank you for making us go back to work. Thank you for pledging allegiance to the Stars and Stripes, the government where you can tax the working man and woman to death. Thank you, and good night.
Are there any other public comments, the audience, that we didn't get a blue slip? Hearing none, we'll move on to Superintendent's communication. Superintendent Purno.
Yes, under Communications, we had one for your requests that was received for a copy of the Lakeview District 205 Bus Contract, which we did grant. Second item is a budget timeline review. This has been reviewed by the Finance Committee, but we are asking the Board to take a final look at it and adopt it this evening as our budget timeline. So with that, Chris Welton will do part of it, and I think Chris Bloom.
Yes. You want to stand next to me up there?
I would be happy to.
No, 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 that's, I'm.
All right.
Can you want me to start or?
Sure.
No, we didn't script it. It's just a meeting. This is a document we put together recognizing that, I think we've all lived through, some of us multiple budget cycles, and we've approved a lot of things, and how do we make sense of all of these different components and pieces? Recognizing that the budget process isn't necessarily kind of moving target in that 80% of our costs are labor, and a lot of that is driven by enrollment, and we don't know our enrollment numbers till after the start of the fiscal year. So as you see the rhythm of the process here, it starts out with the tax levy, but it works its way down. We have to make some estimates, and those estimates become known during the course of the year, and then we need to make sure that we can recheck ourselves like we did this year after the unknowns become known. And then we finally approve the budget in September for the year that had already started on July 1st, but it's necessarily driven that way. And the other piece of that, too, is there are certain dates that are not movable that drive some decisions, and I think the question we had started with was, what are the key decision pieces, or the key data pieces that we need? Prior to being asked to make some of these decisions, particularly around staffing, to make some of these decisions, particularly around staffing, you know, we'll also talk about levies. So what this process is, is it takes the components of the budget cycle, many of which we've been through, and hopefully starts to group them around the levy, the long-term budget, staffing, capital, and where that comes in. So I don't know, Chris, if you have anything to add to that, or do you want to highlight some dates or anything there?
The one thing that I think is important is that we just finished last month the 13-14 budget, and we are already starting on the 14-15 budget with starting to develop five-year projections with PMA. And this was the first time that we've started the five-year projection process this early. And the concept, I think, was to see where the projections are going and so that we have an idea if we're going to need more budget cuts in the future or for the 14-15 budget. So we get ahead of it. And in number three here, I think when we did this, we were looking at, we wanted to see those projections in the fall. So if we needed to do some restructuring, that we would be able to get out to the community in the fall and to share ideas and that sort of thing, which we started that. And it was, we needed to get some better information related to the technology plan and the textbook adoptions over the next five years in the five-year projections. But we will have a five-year projection. PMA will be here in late November, November 26, I believe. PMA will be here with projections at that time. And then they will come back in January after we have the next year's CPI and some other assumptions will be tightened up a little bit in order to get to, I think, some of the key dates here are in January, we want to get, after the Board sees those five-year projections, to get some direction related to staffing levels. As Chris said, our budget is 80% on staffing. And so that's really the key dates there related to the expenditure side of the budget.
And I think with staffing, staffing is driven by the RIF deadline. So there are dates within the contract that if we're going to do a RIF, we have to have notices out by. So we have to back up from that date to make sure that we have an idea of what the staffing plan is. So the first kind of big decision is, are we going to cut this year? And so if you're going to cut, then you have to meet the RIF deadline. If you're not going to cut, you still have a deadline from the standpoint that if you are going to hire, you have to be able to attract candidates. And typically, the time that you're out there looking for candidates for new positions is going to be in the spring, you know, prior to the end of the school year. So regardless of whether you were to cut or you were to add, you still need, we need, they need direction from the Board on what we're thinking as far as staffing levels go, which again, drive the majority of the budget. And then the other pieces kind of layer in here. And what we're trying to do is, Chris referenced the five-year plan, and I guess I was going to talk to it in the Finance and Ops Committee, but we can address that here. I mean, the goal there is to establish a cycle within this where we take the five-year plan, we update it, we do it from a, we call it a maintenance perspective, which is kind of keeping the status quo. And what Chris was talking about is, you know, loading in there the curriculum adoption in a cycle that we are currently on. Loading in there the current technology spend. So you don't just take last year's technology budget and add something to it. It's, okay, so what are we doing with the technology budget this year? And Dave has given us a longer-term view, so we can insert that. On the capital side, it's inserting, you know, we have a 10-year facilities maintenance plan that Frank Schu has presented us, that then rolls also into short-term spending and approvals of individual projects, which you'll see in here, but loading that into a five-year plan. And as we put this all together, starting off with a baseline that says if we just continued on a linear basis from where we are today, you know, drawing that line forward to next year, where are we from a budget standpoint? And then where does that roll into years two, three, and four? And so we can get that kind of an idea when we're making these staffing decisions ahead of time. So this isn't some crisis or some rush at the end. And so once we see that, and I don't know if that number's positive or if that number's negative, that's going to drive some decision-making. You know, the hope is, is that when you layer this in there, if you have a positive number at the bottom, then we're going to have a discussion about, you know, what do we need within the budget? What are the objectives or the values or the things that we want to fund with the money that we have, to the extent that we have some? And that's going to be an ongoing discussion, which then we'll go back into that five-year plan. And the ultimate five-year plan will be something that is discussed in the context of really getting at what are we spending our money on? You know, we can say that we have goals and objectives, but if we don't fund them, they're worthless. I mean, we vote with our wallet here. And so making sure that we're funding the programs that mean the most to us. And that's kind of the lens that we're trying to put on this. So again, we're in the middle of this five-year budget process. The initial discussion at the last Finance Committee meeting was around some of the assumptions, CPI, enrollment, things like that, which we have asked Chris to tighten up and gather. And I think the message, too, and you guys chime in, but the message to the administration, too, that they need to hear, too, is we know we are asking you for estimates. And we know it's very tough. And this is not a prediction. We're not asking you for predictions. We're asking you for some baseline from which to measure variance. You will not come in at the number that you give us today. You can't. Otherwise, you're either a magician, or you spent way too long working on it. But you're giving us your best guess of what this is today. And as we start to know more about enrollment, as we start to know more about budget circumstances and situations, we will update our thinking as that happens. So I just want to make sure everybody understands this budget process. It's not an exercise from which to predict what we're going to do in the future. It's, you know, it's a resource allocation exercise and a baseline to keep ourselves honest as we start to measure how we're doing. So that's the five-year piece, but that's also part of this bigger piece. And I think we did this this year, where we kind of, we didn't set a budget in stone back in February or January, February, March, when we first looked at it. We kind of put that out there, and we worked on those assumptions. And as we knew CPI, and as we knew enrollment figures, and as we knew, you know, where the prior-year budget ended, those all got factored into it, and we updated it. And we ended up adding a little bit of money to the budget at the end, when all the dust had settled, and we figured out what we had. So again, we're all being asked to make decisions very early in the process, too. And necessarily, we need to wait until some things become certain so that we make sure that we don't, you know, negative spend. So at any rate, without going through this whole thing, I think we wanted to get this out there. We wanted to make sure that everybody understood some of the key dates and timing. And to the extent that as we go through this process, there's data or information that you would like to have that we didn't provide, I think, as we go through this, let's talk about, you know, are there certain things that you're asking me to make a decision on this date? I would like to have more before that. And we can adjust this process as we go. But, you know, it's kind of an attempt to manage expectations so nobody's surprised it. You know, what did I just vote for? Why was I asked to vote for this, and I didn't get a chance to ask that question? So I think that was the purpose of this. So if there's any questions, I think we can open it up.
Karen?
Thank you. And really, what you're alluding to at the end, Chris, was the reason why we wanted to talk about the budget cycle upfront. It's not just about meeting the dates. It's not just a math problem. It's the thought process. And it's not just for the Board, but it's for everyone that feeds us information to make a decision, to understand how this all fits into, why you're asking for what you're asking for, how you're going to measure it, you know, why is it of value? Why is it on your priority list? It's good decision-making process. And that's the reason why we're doing this as well. I think that has to be a good message. It's, you know, we are the stewards of the taxpayer money, right? But what we are stewards of is what outcomes they get, the value for that dollar. And this is part of the conversations that we've had over the last three years, that it's just not up to us. Yes, you know, we might be the final decision-makers, but everyone who makes decisions in the district has to go through this thought process of, what's your priority? Why this? You know, what's the rationale? You know, how are you going to measure? What's the performance you expect? Are we going to get that? That's the importance here that we can't lose.
John?
I'm sorry, I just lost it here. Restructuring. There's a capital R restructuring in Item Three. And I'm just probably not remembering what it is. Can you remind me what restructuring is?
I think when we originally put this together, we had asked Dave, and I think they're still working on kind of the vision for the 21st Century School District, the Lighthouse District. And originally, we had thought that the plan was going to necessarily include, as we looked at the five-year projection in years prior, you know, with continued downward slope, that we're going to involve some form of restructuring. I think, given some preliminary flashes on the budget, I think we're in a better situation than we thought we were. And I think, and I hesitate to jump the gun on that because Chris still has to add a few assumptions around curriculum adoption, around technology, around enrollment, kind of tightening some of these things up. But I'm hopeful that we're going to be in a position where this restructuring discussion is one more about making sure that we have resources allocated in the right way. So that doesn't necessarily mean that there aren't things that we could stop doing and other things that we should start doing. You know, so this was kind of put in there. We started this, kind of documenting this stuff six, nine months ago. So capital R restructuring is probably lowercase r restructuring here. But that was the point.
It's basically to remind us that's the time when we should get it done, if it's going to fit into this whole flow of process.
Anything else? We can continue on.
The final item under Superintendent's communication this evening is the School District Library Grant Program. And this grant program, we have every year. We're eligible based upon student enrollment as of September 30th of this year. We will receive approximately $6,000 from the grant. It'll be used for books, audiovisual, and other electronic resources. As part of the grant application, the Board is required to review the School Library Media Program utilizing the Link for Learning Illinois School Library Program Guidelines. The grant application and that linkage for learning is available in the Curriculum Office for the Board and the public. And it can be viewed for many times from 8:00 until 4:30 any day. We will, at the next Board meeting, ask the Board to adopt the grant as part of this process to receive the $6,000. So it's an FYI for the Board of Education.
Any questions on that? All right, then let's move on. Approval of September 18th, 2013, September 24th, 2013, and October 8th, 2013 Board Meeting Minutes. Are there any revisions or changes to the meetings, to the minutes as submitted? Everyone looks like they need more time. Is that true? No, we don't need more time. Okay. Then the minutes stand as submitted. Mrs. Walsh, thank you. The next is Board Committee Reports, Curriculum and Instruction Committee, followed by Finance and Operations. Shannon?
The Curriculum Committee met on October 2nd. And we had Principal Smith come and Chris Covino and talked about modifications to York courses and new courses. And there's a new process for reviewing, for this course proposal that's changed since I've been on the Board. So it's a little bit longer of a process. And what came forward to the committee were four new courses that were proposed and some minor modifications. So I was going to ask Charles, when would that come to the Board for approval?
The course approvals will come next month.
Next month, okay. So look for that in your Board packet. It's a much shorter list than has been in previous years. The Illinois State Board of Education has come down with another mandate for us in Illinois, not unfunded, too. And this has to do with sex education. And this law goes into effect in 2014. We don't have a lot of information about curriculum or resources for how this is going to be put in place. So I guess for now, we are kind of in a holding pattern. Is that true, Charles? Okay. Go ahead if you want to. Yeah.
The changes to the school code indicate that the ISBE will be providing guidance to the local school districts. We have yet to see that guidance, and quite honestly, we're running out of time. For this school year, certainly, we're committed to being compliant to the school code. But we need to have the resources and able to know what direction the state has put us toward.
So stay tuned for that. As we get more information, we'll pass it along. The other item from the high school was graduation requirement. The computer concept requirement has been moved to the middle school level. So that's one less credit for the high school. And then the proposal was to raise the requirement for science from four to six credits. So that would raise the graduation requirement credits, the total credits, to 45.5, just up one point. And the committee had consensus with the proposal brought forth by the York Administration. Charles, when would that be coming to the Board?
First, it has to go to the Policy Subcommittee, and then it will go to the Board for first reading at the second meeting in November, and then for ratification at the meeting in December.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, before the Policy Committee starts passing policy, might this be the best place to talk about that change? Because it's interesting how you fit it in there. I thought it was, if you can refresh my memory and draw on a blank, the idea was moving out one class and adding the two sciences for a net increase of one. Wasn't that it?
That's true. We made some steps a couple of years ago to kind of set this in motion. And we moved computer literacy into the middle school area because we wanted to make sure that our high school students had the skills to be successful for high school before they came to high school, not upon graduation of high school. So we moved those requirements in the middle school level. Obviously, young people today have even greater proficiency with technology than they did when the policy was originally made. So we've made some room in a multi-step process so that it wasn't quite as dramatic impact on the number of credits required for graduation.
I think we also compared some of the schools, districts that we'd like to compare ourselves to for performance purposes and saw them moving, trending in this direction. And it seemed to get out front of this, or in the middle of, rather, this trend towards having six credits in science. It seems to go along with the trend towards STEM and other initiatives. It seemed like a good thing. I'm, you know, looking forward to putting the policy together, but just like to hear from Board members if there's, you know, any feelings about it that need to be heard before we put pen to paper.
Karen?
I wondered if you talked about, if you're taking out a computer concepts, is there, like, programming classes? When John referred to other districts that we like to look at, do they have requirements for programming for the kids? Or do they just take the computer concepts down to the middle school level and leave the computer classes as options?
Most of our analysis was on the science requirements of comparable schools, also noting that one of the biggest barriers towards students being ready for college is the amount of science that they've had. In terms of ACT's College Readiness Benchmark Report that we see in the newspapers on an annual basis, was really holding kids back of their science scores. So this was a way for us to increase our confidence that students are ready for college upon graduation from York High School. Additionally, we know that more and more students are taking computer skill classes in middle schools. Anecdotally, we also have a variety of options for kids, and we look to continue to explore them at the high school so students can take them on an elective basis.
Yeah, one other thing, too. The summer, we talked a little bit about summer school. This can open up some other interesting options for summer school, some science electives, because students won't have to take that computer concept course. A lot of them are taking, high school students were taking that in the summer. So summer school will change a bit, too, for the better, in my eyes, with some new electives, or maybe not electives, I mean, requirements, too, but in the science area.
And were those course, those science course changes also part of the thing we discussed earlier in the report about the course changes, the science changes that correspond? The science changes that correspond to this change?
Yeah, some of the modifications are directly related to this policy change.
If I can seek a point of clarification, the first graduating class that will be affected by, if the board passes that additional graduation requirement of a third year of science, what is the first high school graduating class year that will be affected by that?
That will be next year's freshman class, so that should be, if I do my math quickly and on the spot well enough, is that the class of 2018? Okay.
Thank you for that point of clarification. Karen?
Just one last piece. I mean, I completely understand the requirements, I completely understand the science piece. I just don't want us to miss something from moving the computer concepts down if we're looking at, you know, best-in-class, where we typically are. Is there something that we're missing? That's all I would caution us, because once this goes away, we don't have it, so.
I think that's a great concern, and we took that very seriously from the start. A great deal of conversation was held between staff at the high school and staff at the middle schools. We've revamped the program at the middle school level to make sure that we don't have those gaps. So we've done some deep analysis, and really good work was done to make sure that we're making, to make sure that the students have the skills they need to have to be successful at high school.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'll go back. One other item, long-term budget planning. This fits into what Chris was talking about. Charles has been working on what is curriculum maintenance, and we think this is the six-year curriculum cycle, curriculum adoptions of six, every six years. So to maintain, there's a cost to maintain that, and then he has a long-term budget planning document, which we talked about last month, we're talking about it this month. It's going to be an agenda item for November 6th, the next curriculum meeting. So it's an ongoing document, it's going to be with us for a while, because we're trying to build in what is curriculum maintenance, and then what are curriculum enhancements that could possibly be added to our five-year PMA projection. Now, one thing, one issue with that is, we need stakeholder involvement on what the priorities are for any enhancement. So that's going to take Charles a while to work with staff and the appropriate stakeholders to figure out what those enhancements should be. We can't name those at this point. So it's hard to build something in the projection when you don't have a name for it yet, but we're working on just trying to get some figures, you know, best estimates of what we could do to enhance curriculum, you know, while, in tandem with getting stakeholder involvement. Okay, go ahead.
And I think, just to build on that, just to make sure that everybody's clear on direction, Charles is, you know, in my mind, Shannon talked about maintenance, and so we put, you know, we put the maintenance in there, and that's kind of just keeping, drawing the line straight, the enhancement piece. I think, as a budget process, you don't name that. I mean, the question is, is how much do we as a board have available to invest in curriculum enhancement as we put our five-year plan together? So they will necessarily be placeholders. And so you've got a list of things, and if you had your wish list, you'd load it all in the first year. But, you know, we as a board have to make some allocation decisions. So it is not expected that, it'll be, it would be more like, here's a list of all the things I'd love to do, and, you know, here's what they cost, and we as a board say, okay, well, I think we can invest X per year in trying to make progress towards that. So that's the kind of decision that we're asking for, the information that we're asking for, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
In the curriculum department, they're working on a district-wide ELL program. So as our numbers increase in ELL, there's a program readily available for the schools. So we don't have different schools doing different things with our ELL students. That's it.
Anything else for Dr. Harold? I thought you were raising your hamburger. Anything else for the questions for curriculum and instruction? Hearing none, then we'll move on to finance and operations.
All right. First, I'd like to say that, you may be aware that there was a marathon run in Chicago a couple of weeks ago, but what you didn't know is that we had some participants actually finish the finance committee marathon of last week. And so congratulations to all the finishers that made it to the end of that. We had a deep agenda, and some of this was driven by the desire to kind of try to get our timing on track as far as this budget, this budget rhythm goes. And so we kind of walked through, we'll try not to make this a marathon report out. September monthly financials, Chris, unless there's anything that's changed, the state has fallen a payment behind. They had caught up, and they've fallen a payment behind again, we continue to watch that. But other than that, there's nothing that was particularly outstanding as far as variance goes on the September reports. The next topic was discussion of the tentative tax levy, and as you can see from the budget process overview, that's the first, that's the first item in our annual budget process. And what we discussed was the mechanics of how this works. And so we're, we take last year's budget, and if you're assessing at the cap, you add CPI to it, and that's what your levy is for the existing EAV. And then you had new growth. And so when you compute the, what you were going to levy, you have to put an estimate in for new growth. And the issue is that if you put an estimate in that's low, and new growth comes out higher than what you estimated, you do not, you are not able to capture the revenue from the new growth of that incremental piece. So typically, the preliminary tax levy is estimated higher than what you think it's going to be, because you want to make sure that you capture that new growth number. And so, and let me be clear, this estimate has no bearing on what we actually collect. What we collect is what we're legally entitled to collect, is computed by the assessor's office. We are making, you know, basically a placeholder assessment, or placeholder decision to put into that levy. So, you know, while it might show, I think what Chris was talking about is, you know, some numbers, I think last year, well, let's just use real numbers, for instance, we did a preliminary levy at this time last year was, what was the numbers, five, five something, six? In our preliminary.
The levy ended up being, I believe, five, five, two, six.
And then the actual?
Was three, nine, four.
Three, nine, four. So while, you know, the headline, when we put our, and we'll see this levy, this tentative levy come to the board in coming, in coming meetings. Just for a point of reference, last year, like Chris said, it was over 5% because we wanted to make sure we captured the new growth. That said, what we actually received was much lower than that, because the actual new growth was the number that we actually received. So just helping everyone understand, we talked through, and Chris was talking about, you know, trying to get a feel for what the board thought around what kind of estimate we should make, and their comfort with putting a little bit higher number in there, because we're not real sure this year, we're not, I think they're, Chris is checking some additional data sources, but it's a little tougher this year to estimate with kind of the way the economy's going, the way the building's going in Elmhurst and things like that. And that we may come out with a levy number that maybe look, the headline number may be a little bit higher than we might have originally thought. But wanting to make sure that everybody understands that that number is not what we actually get. What we'll get is what is actually computed at the time the assessor's office finally has the EAV calculations done. Sure.
So have you ever been too low with your estimate, or have you always been pretty accurate, or at least above?
No, we've always made sure that we put enough dollars in.
Okay.
In the levy.
And, I mean, to be honest, the only time that that estimate, I mean, if we as a board have decided to levy at the cap, then we want to make sure that we levy above what we think we're going to get to capture at the cap. The only discussion would be that if we decided we were going to levy below the cap. But as you can see with the budget discussion that we've had, that if anything, we've been making a lot of cuts over the past years, and, you know, it's not like we have this magic surplus that would allow us to levy below the cap. So given that, I think that the policy of the board, well, since I've been on it, since I've been following it, it's been to levy at the cap, what you're going to see is a preliminary levy calculation that's probably got some significant cushion in it to make sure that we gather all of the revenue from the new growth that would be in town. So that was the discussion, as Chris just wanted to give us a heads up, that what he was going to bring the board was going to be a calculation that was designed to make sure that we weren't, we weren't wrong on the low side. Any other questions about the levy? Okay. The next discussion was a review of our outstanding debt. So as you may know, or remember, we've been on a, on a, on a plan to refinance, given the low interest rates, to refinance our debt. We've elected to take, you know, a conservative approach in what we call legging the transaction, taking a piece off the table every year. And so at this time of the year, we reevaluate our strategy, and we look at what the coming year has. And Elizabeth Hennessy from William Blair came out and talked to us about it, and I think a couple of things came out of that. Number one, this year, there was an opportunity to refinance some of our bonds in October and have, and have no, what they call negative arbitrage. We don't have to advance refund where we put the money in an account that earns next to nothing for nine months. So you could advance refund these bonds, we could issue bonds today, start paying interest on the new bonds, take those proceeds, put them in the bank, and then wait till we can call the bonds in October, and suffer that negative arbitrage of putting, you know, borrowing money and then just putting it in zero-interest rate checking account and waiting for the bonds to mature, or we can wait till October and issue the bonds and refund then. And I think that was the advice coming, you know, out of Elizabeth, her recommendation would be to, this year, to keep an eye on this, but to try to wait till October, from the standpoint of looking at our next slug of refinancing. And there's also an opportunity at that point in time to look at potentially refinancing a larger portion of the debt that's outstanding, again, as we keep an eye on interest rates. The second piece of the discussion pertained to the long-term maturity structure of our debt, meaning there are a number of bond issues that are out there with certain requirements for principal repayment. And at the time those were issued, they had a repayment schedule that went up at the, in the out years. So it's like having a mortgage where your principal payment goes up every year, rather than a flat level payment on your mortgage. And so they backended the principal that we needed to pay. And so there's some significant increases in those maturities as we start to get into these years, plus or minus a million dollars a year on the debt service side. And so as we look at our opportunities to refund or refinance some of our debt, one of the discussions that, you know, I think that we're going to have over the next several months, again, we have till October till we have to make a decision on the next, the next set of issues, is talking about the structure of our maturities. I think Elizabeth said in the meeting that, at her back of the envelope calculation was every year, the average $350,000 home, the portion of their tax bill that is dedicated to repaying bonds is going to go up by about $60. So next year, it'll go up by 60, the following year, it'll go up by 120, because it's cumulative, and then this just starts to add. And it's, these are bonds that were issued in '04 and '06, well before any of us were here. And, but they're locked in based upon the referendum that was done at the time and the term structure of the bonds that they put in place to do it. And so we, as a board now, need to take a look at kind of the promises that were made in the past on the bond side, and there are some options to potentially refinance to flatten those payments, but they come with a cost. Because, you know, if you refinance your mortgage and extend it out an extra few years, you're paying more interest cost. So trying to balance the absolute, you know, your tax bill doesn't go up as fast, but you pay it for more years to get these, to take care of the outstanding bond issues that we have. And so we are going to be keeping an eye on that, too. I think that, given that the advice was to keep an eye on October as a kind of a target date for the next slug of restructuring, or refinancings, that at the same time, we should look at, rather than just refinance with the exact same maturity structure, potentially extending that out to make that tax hit to the average homeowner maybe a little less. But again, that's going to require some analysis and some discussion, so it's just a heads up that that, over the next several months, we will be having those discussions and reporting back to the board. So is there any questions on that piece?
Well, and that, that sort of looking at, looking at all of our finances, not just this year, not just the next, you know, few years, but throughout the term of these bonds, and, you know, that's what we're looking at. That's what drove the budget process overview and us putting the timeline together, right, Chris?
Mm-hmm.
So just so that people understand, you know, that there's a lot of missing pieces, or there's a lot of piece, moving pieces. And we want, you know, people to be aware, this is how you make the decision.
Mm-hmm.
And this is why we're asking for the information from people, and this is why everybody needs to kind of understand a little bit more than.
And the other, the other piece of information that we hope to gather as we go towards this November date on the refinancing is, is starting to bring into view a little more clarity around our long-term capital and facilities plan, which we're just getting our arms around at this point, there's another item on here, we'll talk about that. But, you know, to the extent that we find facilities needs that are going to require borrowing at some point in time in the future, figuring out how that would layer on top of what has already been committed by prior boards, and potentially creating some room within that structure to add bonds if you had to at that time. And so again, I mean, and not saying that we're going to issue any bonds, but it would be prudent from a financial management standpoint to take a look at the term structure of our maturities and figure out what flexibility do we have, what flexibility do we not have, particularly as we get into these refinancings. Because once you refinance one of these issues and you lock in the maturity structure, you can't change that at that point in time. So we got one shot at it, and we just want to make sure that we do this correctly, is not the right word, we do this in a prudent manner. And that, and that leads a little bit into, we talked about the five-year, five-year plan and assumptions, and you're kind of together, we're having a discussion, I think we had talked about, a long-term facilities planning, enrollment projections, and some of the needs there, and the option of doing it ourselves in-house or looking at a third party that would come in and do it. I think from a facilities planning standpoint, it was good timing, because our enrollment projections are running out, the last caserta data that we have, and there's a need to update that. And that impacts, you know, a lot of different pieces, particularly within the budget. When you look at the five-year plan, you're loading in five-year budget projections, and right now, I think we're drawing a line forward based upon kind of kindergarten enrollment and some growth rate, and, you know, we have two years left of caserta projections, and then we're kind of making it up based on a formula. And one of the questions before the board at some point here, we're going to, Chris is doing the research around this, but is, do we want to update our, do we want to update our enrollment forecast? Chris has done some preliminary work, I think the ballpark is about $15,000 to do that. And then if we're going to update that forecast, there are firms that do just that, or there are firms that do that in the context of potentially being able to roll that into a master facility plan. And so if it's going to cost the same thing, you know, why wouldn't you engage somebody that had the potential to then do some additional work for you? And that's what Chris is investigating right now. We don't have all the information on that now, that the initial, you know, kind of back of the envelope is, is it's about $15,000 for an enrollment study and another $15,000 for the master facility planning. And understanding what you get within that bucket or not, we've still got a ways to go. But I think the ballpark is, you know, somewhere between $30,000 to $50,000 for the whole thing, with 15 of that being money that you would spend anyway if you were going to do a caserta update. And so we're, Chris is continuing to investigate, I think the finance committee will continue to discuss, and then bring a set of options to the board for approval as we, as we move forward. Yes, Ms. Pestoito?
I don't know how far out the caserta estimates usually go, do you know? I mean, is it a five-year, 10-year?
We have two, but when they, when they do a caserta projection, is it a, it's a five-year, 10-year? What do we have?
I think it was, I think it was 10, but as you get farther out, like this last three years, it doesn't go by building anymore, it just goes by overall estimates. So you kind of fall off the data a little bit. So I think it's detailed, five to seven, and then less detailed in the last two or three years.
And one of the questions that we have that we want to look at is, I think historically, the aggregate numbers on caserta have been pretty good for us, but the building level has been kind of some wild swings, Madison particularly, and whether we want to take the tact of doing an aggregate level set of projections and doing our own building level adjustments based upon what we know about our community. Because, I mean, you're going to get kind of close, and then that's, I mean, it may impact a headcount here or there, but as long as you get the total right, you're doing a student ratio for certifies. And so it doesn't really matter what building they end up with, and if you end up with, you know, a smaller class here and you have to add, it may be two or three, but we can project with that. So that's, I think, part of the discussion, is whether we want to go just for an aggregate level, or you want to, how much extra would it cost to try to do a building level, and is it even useful when you do that? But again, we're, Chris is doing the investigation legwork, the committee will be seeing, probably having another discussion. We were trying to get to that at the last meeting, but it was 10:01, and we decided that we weren't going to be very useful coming into that at that point in time. that we weren't going to be very useful coming into that at that point in time.
Just a question, as the committee goes and decides how to, what type of data they're going to use, and I'm, the question is, I'm wondering, is it just the district that uses this data, or do the individual facility buildings use the data? And if so, would that be, you know, what would they be missing if they didn't have that, that building data?
I'm just going to be a little stickler and just point out that we don't decide anything. I just want to make sure that we decide anything.
Oh, absolutely. But I mean, just...
Yeah, what do the, I'll leave it to you guys as to, what, do they, do the building level leaders rely on some of this caserta stuff, or is it mainly for us? And we kind of, I mean, we collaborate with them on what numbers we think we should use?
It's mainly for planning purposes. As a building level, it's not that meaningful. I mean, as meaningful it is for building level principals to try to look ahead, I think the biggest, probably the biggest factor going forward is getting a number on the kindergarten classes that are coming in, because that affects everything downstream. So, and the last, this year especially, we had a drop-off. And so the data is saying that's a little anomaly. Is it the second year? Will a new study give us more enlightenment as to birth rates and what can be expected? But for a building principal, you know, we're going to go by roll-ups each year and then a factor of how many new students might come in.
I think the bigger issue on the building level, and again, the question is, is whether we have somebody from the outside do it for us, or that we take the aggregate and start to apply our own. When you start to do a facilities plan, you absolutely need to have some idea of what, what kind of, and it's not a prediction again, it's probably a range of potential. And caserta had done that, again, they're A, B, C. And starting to figure out, you know, has Emerson run out of space in three years? You know, what happens with Lincoln? I mean, all of our buildings have different, different types of needs, and so I think at some point in time, you're going to have to get this down to a building level if you're going to go into that next step of facilities planning. And so how to do it is the big question again. So, I mean, we should have that discussion here. We're kind of doing the legwork now, and I would plan to put that on a future board meeting agenda once, once we have something to bring to the board. Anything else? One of the things I just wanted to point out, in the packet, there was an assessment appeal, and there was, it was called a settlement. I just wanted to make sure everybody understands what happened there. There was a building that had challenged, their, a commercial building that had challenged their assessment, their EAV. And what, historically, we had done is not, we've kind of accepted, nobody challenged, our district didn't challenge, and usually if our district doesn't challenge, no other taxing body does. And those things are generally waved through by the township or the assessor. And I think it was, gosh, a couple of years ago, year and a half ago, we had asked the, we had asked the administration to take a look at, I think, anything above, there was a threshold that we had said, it escapes me right now, but we had, we had asked them to go ahead and, and look at challenging anything above a certain threshold. And this was the first one that kind of came through. And what the settlement resulted in was a net refund to the property owner, 30, which was $30,000 less than the refund that they would have gotten if we wouldn't have said anything. So by challenging this reassessment at a lower level, we actually settled with an EAV at higher than what they had originally been seeking because we challenged it, which, which reduced the refund that they were owed. So does that... Yeah?
Was this a settlement of our claim or our challenge to the...
I mean, what was, it was worded as a settlement, Chris, and Eris, our attorney, had worked it out. Is it, I didn't sure how the mechanics of that exactly worked.
It's a settlement between our attorney, you know, our attorney worked out a settlement with the property owner's attorney for the EAV on the particular property.
So, so John, what happened is a commercial building owner came to the assessor's office and said, "You're assessing my building too high. Here are my comps, my quotes..."
Right.
"...for equal property." And it had never been the school districts' practice before we directed the administration a year, year and a half ago to do otherwise. Never been the school districts' practice to challenge any of those challenges to, to property assessment values. So we agreed at a, at a dollar limit, I think roughly it's a million-dollar, now I think it's about a $2 million property. We were careful to exclude homeowners, that we wouldn't be challenging a homeowner who challenged their, their assessment, but really toward larger commercial properties. And in this case, this building owner challenged their assessment, brought in their evidence. The assessor's office would have been inclined to agree with them, asked the taxing bodies if the, if any of the taxing bodies wanted to step in and present their own case. Our attorneys did that on behalf of the school district and frankly, therefore, on behalf of every other taxing district, and agreed at a assessed valuation somewhere between what the property owner had proposed and between their, what their old assessment was. And we simply, our attorney simply just came to a compromise agreement for what the assessed valuation of the property should be.
Is that something our attorney can do with administration direction, or does it take board approval, or is just...
No, you gave us the authority to do that a year and a half ago. So if you remember, that was a board directive.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I remember.
So you allowed, you allowed us to go and negotiate this and then come up, and I don't, we were not required to come back to the board on this.
Right.
We signed a retainer agreement or something at the time that gave you guys the ability to do that.
And with our legal firm.
Okay. All right. I do remember the discussion, I remember this coming up and everything, and I didn't know how settlement was handled. But there was some delegation of authority within certain parameters, or...
Yes, yes. We set a minimum property value, right.
That was it, okay. Or a minimum property value for settlement, or a minimum property value for challenging?
For challenging.
Oh, but did we give settlement parameters?
We did not.
Okay.
We, we can tell you that the attorney within our law firm that does this, does this also for several other taxing bodies, has a vast amount of experience, is very good at this process.
So I think a description of what it was was written up by forensic, and I don't know if, do you can share that with John? Just from a legal standpoint, to understand, because I don't think we can answer exactly what it's, is it a settlement? Is it an agreement? Is it, where's the township fit into this? What about the other taxing bodies? How does all that? I, I don't know. Chris, I think Chris had gotten a letter the morning of the finance committee meeting and just showed it to us. So I wanted to make sure that we made the board aware that we got that letter. And what were the next steps on that, Chris?
I, I let the attorney know that we approved the settlement.
That you approved the settlement? As you were delegated the authority to do? Yes, because we, as a committee, do not approve.
That's absolutely right.
Yes. Just want to make sure. All right. In the last piece, just a quick update. We talked about, we gave the, we gave the committee an update. Shannon and I had a wonderful breakfast with the, with our colleagues on the, on the city council and the park district boards to discuss stormwater. This was an initial get-to-know-you discussion where we talked about our kids and our, our history with Elmhurst and how we came here and whatnot. And, you know, it was a nice social conversation where I think we represented that we were, we were happy to participate in the process, there were going to be certain parameters that would govern our participation, and we were going to be working on that and getting them, getting them that list. But, you know, at the end of the day, there's really not, not much beyond more of just a social discussion at this point in time, and we will continue discussions. The committee, I think, agreed that our job is to basically be a conduit for information back and forth. We are not redesigning engineering plans. You know, we are going to serve as the conduit to understand what's been going on and what's being asked, and we represent the schools. And we will, we will do our best to represent our, our schools and our constituents at the school level. And, you know, we recognize we're part of a community, and that's where it goes. So, anything else to add?
Does Dave go to those two, or is it just the two of you? Not that you need any more committees to go to, I was just curious.
No, this was, the government officials were not invited. It's between the elected officials.
Okay.
In the weekly update, you mentioned you'll be compiling our requirements for stormwater management. So if the time comes and we have to talk more with the city about details, we have our requirements. So what is the timing for that? When would, when are you looking to, soon or over the next month, or...
I would say soon. I, I think within the next couple, two or three weeks, if we could get and solidify what those requirements are, so that you and Chris, if it does come up in your conversations, you know what the board is looking for as far as requirements go. So, and I don't know if there's, I don't think there's another meeting scheduled for you. So the sense of urgency isn't quite what it was, but...
I think what we laid out committee was, is Dave is going to kind of serve as the focal point for aggregation, that the finance committee would kind of get those into a structure that we would then bring to the board for kind of final approval as far as what, what that criteria, what our requirements are, and then, then we have them. And I think the point was is that, you know, I think the city's in a process which is awaiting some, I think, grant information or whatnot from the, from the federal government. And so we're going to kind of play along in that timeline, and we'll see. It's not, at this point, I think our big question still remains, you know, how are we going to fund it? And, you know, when, when we figure out where the funding's coming from, we can spend time on that. But I think we said this earlier, our job's to educate kids and be, and we're going to be good partners. But right now, we're focused on educating kids, but we'll be ready when it comes time to talk about it.
Regarding the four kind of bullet points that Dave forwarded on to the board, I would expect that those bullet points would be added to, enhanced by the board. And then at some point in the process, I would think we would publish those and open it up for public comment, because this is the community school district. It's not the board's school district. So, you know, at the appropriate point, after we have put in our thoughts, I think we should solicit the community's thoughts as well. So let's, yeah, the sooner that we can get back to Dave, the better, I think. And then we can move on with the process. Go ahead.
And I think to your point, I mean, I've been having discussions with, I'm the liaison at Jackson, so with the PTA president there, this is, we like to have a discussion, engage the PTA and the community there. And they had questions about what we were thinking on stormwater, and I have questions about what they're thinking. And once we get these, these items set up, I think that absolutely going to the PTAs and the schools that are impacted, you know, as well as our broader community. But I'm giving them an opportunity to weigh in on that because it's, it's their schools.
And anything else in the finance and operations committee? Because that report was almost as long as the meeting.
Oh, wait, Jim Collins is right on interest rates. I forgot that part.
No, thank you.
You were just asking for that. All right, yes, Jim was, Jim was right, finally.
Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, then let's move on. The superintendent's consent agenda, which includes with this meeting standard personnel and financial reports. In addition to those, the approval of the 2013-2014 application for recognition of schools. In fact, I, the approval of bid number 14-04 for a school activity bus, the approval to purchase Dell Wise virtual desktop infrastructure, the approval to purchase Dell server and storage area network equipment, approval of a donation to York's Distinguished Alumni Program, which I will comment that will, the inaugural York Distinguished Alumni Program presentation will be November 7th in the Commons at York Thursday night. The public is invited to attend. We hope to have a good turnout to, to honor the first class of distinguished alumni from York High School. And the, so the York Distinguished Alumni Committee, which is comprised of many alumni of York High School, donated $5,200 to get this program off and running, and that $5,200 also included a $1,000 donation for the District 205 Foundation, and we thank all of them. The next is an approval for a, a donation for Hawthorne, which is from the Hawthorne PTA, approximately $6,100 for a portable sound system. Thank you to the Hawthorne PTA. The next is an approval of a donation from the Sandberg PTA, about a little under $1,000 for replacement water filters for the school's water bottle refilling stations. So thank you to the Sandberg PTA. And then also, three, three policies. Approval of revised policy 2:105, the Illinois Ethics and Gift Ban Act. This is a first reading. The second is the approval of revised policy 5:185, family and medical leave. This is also a first reading. And then the approval of revised policy 7:340, the student records policy, and this is also a first reading. So, may I have a motion for items A through L? Is there any items that anyone would like removed and have a separate discussion? Hearing none, then can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through L? Anyone? Thank you, Shannon.
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through L.
Seconded by Mrs. Bastido. Thank you, Emily. So, moved by Shannon Ebner, seconded by Emily Bastido, Mrs. Walsh.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Next on our agenda is upcoming meetings. Tuesday, October 29th is the Board Improvement Committee meeting here in District 205 Center, and I will comment that all of these meetings are, are in this building. Tuesday, November 5th is the Joint PTA and Board of Education Community Forum. This year, the community forum will be just the Board of Education. In prior years, the administration has joined the board. The PTA council has felt that the communication between the administration and the community is so good that frankly, they just want to hear from the board. So we're going to try to structure that, that meeting in a way that it keeps it at board-level items and not administrative-level items. And this is our first attempt, so we'll see how successful we can be at, at that objective. Wednesday, November 6th, this is the Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, November 12th, our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 PM. Thursday, November 14th, the Performance Management Committee meeting at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, November 19th, the Finance and Operations Committee meeting at 6:30 PM. And Tuesday, November 26th, again, our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 PM. Next on our agenda is the approval of closed-session items. Can we have a motion regarding student residency, please? Emily?
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education approve and uphold the hearing officer's factual findings that student A is not a resident of the school district because said student does not and has not been residing within the school district's attendance boundaries on a regular fixed basis since at least the beginning of the 2013-14 school year. As a result, I further move that student A be disenrolled on October 23rd, 2013, and that tuition be charged from the first day of the 2013-14 school year in the amount of $3,015.45.
I need a second, please. Seconded by, by Karen. Any discussion? I would like to make one comment. The community has let the board know that to be good stewards of their money, they expect the Board of Education to be diligent in providing our own students the very best education that we can possibly provide them with, but also to be diligent about making sure that we are educating just our own students, taxpayers that live within the community. The board has directed the administration to be diligent on this matter, and the administration is being diligent. So you will see more of these student residency motions... So you will see more of these student residency motions as the year goes by. So, is there anything to add to that, or can we move to a vote? Okay. Mrs. Walsh, if you would call the roll.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. There's seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries. Next on the agenda is the Board Communications. Anything to share among board members? Nothing? Going once? All right. Well, we have reached the end of our published agenda, therefore I declare this meeting adjourned.